Good evening, Littleton. Welcome to the Select Board meeting for Tuesday, April 22. We'll start with a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have one virtual attendee, Karen Morrison, is on Zoom. So we'll begin with reading of the mail, department updates, use of the town common for graduating senior lawn signs, establishing a safety zone in the Long Lake neighborhood, Veterans Agent Memorial Day Parade approval, charter commission. We'll do public input, Select Board updates, vote to change our one-day liquor license process, discussing of performance reviews, discussing of the Bransfield Tree Company for orchard work, approval of a contract for with TEC for infrastructure work of 550 King Street, 7:45 we'll talk about town meeting updates, move on to eight o'clock, we'll have approval of minutes, and adjourn quickly at 8:05. So we'll start with the mail.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Select Board. We have current vacancies on the town boards. We have current opportunities that are appointed by the Select Board, the Agricultural Commission, Conservation Commission, Cultural Council, Economic Development Committee, Historical Commission, Master Plan Implementation Committee, Permanent Municipal Building Committee, Zoning Board of Appeals. And we have one opening on a committee that's appointed by the School Committee, and that is the Finance Committee. Sign up to receive public notifications for the town of Littleton. Register www.littletonma.org/subscribe. Community impacts, public safety activity, town meeting changes, transportation issues, public health concerns, town events. Stay informed. And we have notifications of four separate hearings from complaints from compliance checks from the Alcohol Beverages Control Commission of four establishments in our community. We have one for the Littleton Sub Shop. And then we have another, the next one is the Tavern in the Square. And the next one is the Four Jacks.
Four Jacks.
Yes, Four Jacks. Thank you. And the last one's Littleton's One Stop Liquors, and they were all for serving minors at various times. And Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Town Council has said that there is no action required right now with the Select Board.
They have a hearing?
They will, ABBCC will conduct a hearing. However, if you want to bring them in individually or together and just have them explain to the Select Board, that's up to you. You have that right. But no action can be taken other than them explaining what happened.
Until after the hearing?
Correct. Okay. Thank you. We are going to continue down. Next thing, we have got something from Xfinity, writing to update the information, cable television license franchise in our community, Comcast attention government relations with copies going to government relations in Manchester, Hampshire, and Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. They also want to let the customers know about changing Xfinity TV services. Please note the following changes in the lineup in our community. On May 22, 2025, adult channels 435 to 459 will be upgraded to HD and moved to channels 1883 to 1894. On May 22, 2025, Hitz, H-I-T-Z, channel 1880 and Hitz 2, channel 1881 will no longer be available. However, these networks will continue to be available on their other channel locations. Hitz channels 342 and 1817 and Hitz 2 channels 343 and 1818. They also have this letter as part of the notification that contains the municipal building emergency trouble reporting procedures that we have updated within our system. Now we've got a notification from Mdar, which is the Department of Agricultural Resources. The notification that back in January, they reviewed the Littleton Electric Light and Water yearly operational plan for 2025, and it satisfies all the requirements put forth by the department. Following up, pursuant notice of approval to LELWD again, for the approval is given by the attending members of the Rural Advisory Panel. Copies of the approved VMP should be mailed to the Chief of Liquidation, official, Board of Health, Conservation Commission. That is Pesticide Control Act of Mass General Laws, Chapter 132B, or the regulations probably dated there under 333 CMR inclusive may subject the responsible parties to agency action referral to this matter to the Office of the Attorney General in Commonwealth, Massachusetts. Then it goes further into the review of available documents for sensitive areas of rights of way in Massachusetts with the chemical that would be used. And it, there's five pages of that. Scroll through that. And finally, this was LELWD on April 4. That was the herbicide application notification. So we're a little bit backwards. This was the cover letter for that. And so it is required to provide notification of activities regarding LELWD's right-of-way herbicide application program. And that will start on or about May 1, 2025, and go through September 30 of 2025. And, okay, let me continue down.
Did you get a call on that? Everybody got a phone call, I think, on the herbicide. I did.
Then we have also received notification to commend Myron Toole, our town planner and the planning staff, for the efforts put forth in implementing the floodplain management measures for the town of Littleton. A flood insurance study and a flood insurance rate map have been completed by the community, and they will become effective on July 8, 2025. Outstanding job, Myron.
That's part of the, that's the town meeting vote to accept those.
Yes, sir.
So there's a planning board article to accept that new map.
Yes, sir. And we also have here, we have Keith L. Morris from Leeds, Massachusetts. Serves as the formal notification with pesticides board regulations. Commence with a post-herbicide application program on or after May 1, 2025, include October 31, 2025. That is notification to that. Here we have a petition of National Grid for gas main locations, and that was submitted to Diane Quarry. However, our DPW Director, Steve Yonley, has informed National Grid that they would need to go apply through him. And that is replacing the existing four-inch regulator vault at the intersection of King Street and Shattuck Street with a new four-inch prefabricated district regulator station and abandoning the existing regulator station 192.
Does this require opening roads at all?
Yes.
So they need to do that before the sewer work is complete?
Correct. Then we have the butters list, notifying everyone of such. Then we have, here is another letter from FEMA. It just had received a letter stating the community is until July 8, 2025. And it was notified that the contact information for FEMA Regional Office had been updated, and they just provided us with a new updated contact info with that. And that'd be it. Thank you.
Okay. Department Board updates, using the town common for the yard signs.
Yes, sir. This is requesting Liz Shocklin is requesting the use of Littleton Common for the display of yard signs with photos of graduating seniors. And that will take place from May 14, 2025 through May 30, 2025. And everything has been signed off and accepted just before you.
Any comments, board members?
Past practice.
I didn't know if we normally had them up for Memorial Day or they were...
They take them out the day before, typically, don't they?
Okay. Because this is past Memorial Day. That was my only question on this was Memorial Day.
Yeah. Memorial Day is the 26th. They asked to keep them up through the following. It's just going to impede some of the kids sitting along the common on the curb because the signs are pretty close to the curbing. Maybe we could just tell Liz to set them back a little bit?
Yeah.
Okay. No problem.
Okay. Any other comments?
Move that the Select Board approve the use of the Littleton, of the lower Littleton Common for the display of signs with photos of Littleton graduating seniors.
Move by Matthew, second by Chuck. We have to do a roll call vote. Gary?
Gary's a yes.
Chuck?
Chuck's a yes.
Matthew?
Matthew's a yes.
Karen? Can she hear us?
I hope so.
Judy?
She's working on it.
Karen, can you hear us?
Can you all hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. I'm a yes.
Okay. And Mark's a yes. Thank you, Karen. Okay. Long Lake Safety Zone discussion and vote. So we had a long discussion about the safety zone at our last meeting. We didn't take a vote on it because we didn't, not all members were present. I don't know, Rob, if you want to say any few words. We've had the, since the meeting, the speed zone was down, the radar zone was, radar trailer was down there. And Mr. Yonley's weighed in on where to place signs and what signs to go up. So I don't know if there's any board discussion that we had on this.
I mean, I don't know why we wouldn't do it, I guess.
I think you guys covered it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I drove down there a little before the last meeting, just, you know, after I had spoke with Mr. Rouse, just to kind of get a feel for what that speed limit feels like at even at 30. Don't tell anybody. 25, just to kind of get a feel, especially when there's people walking dogs and things like that. I think that area to me, 20 miles an hour feels very safe for a driver, when there are people about, especially as we get into, obviously, the time and why it's going to be buzzing with people. But so I'm very comfortable with 20 miles an hour in that zone. A little tricky coming down the hill to get down to 20 really quick. But I mean, that's, a lot of places are like that. But it's necessary in that, in that area. I do want to say that it's a little bit uncharacteristic for the board to, you know, we put out the speeds things out there for a reason. And I know they were kind of contrary to what we're going to do. But this, I think, this situation specifically, this to me is more common sense, just where it's located with the lake.
Recreational.
Without really sidewalks and the activity along the lake, it just, it makes perfect sense to me. So I'm glad we got some data. But I think it makes, makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think it sets a precedence for being almost like that. I'm going to call it spot zoning. It's not...
Right. Spot speeding.
Yeah, well, yeah, a spot.
Enforcement.
Enforcement, yeah. So I think everything Gary just said.
Perfect area for it. So thank you for your work that you put into this, Mr. Rouse, and everybody that's here for that and that contributed to the signatures and everything else that pushed this forward. So thank you. Safety first.
Want to see if Karen has anything?
Did you have anything to add, Karen? I think you're muted.
Thanks, guys. No, I'm fully in favor.
Okay. My only comment was the signs were, Steve talked about putting up...
Yeah, I saw.
He had the 20 mile an hour signs and then an end zone sign. And I think rather than an end zone sign, it might be better to put up a 25.
Just that.
Put up a 25 sign rather than the end zone. Because the end kind of implies that it's a free-for-all and don't really say what the speed limit is there. So changing the end zone to a 25 would be, I think, a better approach.
But we're going to allow Steve to make all the decisions on the signage.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, I'm ready. If you're ready for a motion?
Yeah.
Move that the Select Board vote pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 90, Section 18B, and Article 15 passed unanimously during the October 30, 2017 special town meeting, to designate as a safety zone posted with a 20 mile per hour speed limit, Lake Shore Drive from its intersection with Aspen Road to its intersection with Beach Drive, and Beach Drive from its intersection with Ivy Road to its intersection with Lake Shore Drive, and Lake Drive with its intersection with Ivy Road to its intersection with Lake Shore Drive.
Second. Move by Matthew, second by Chuck. Roll call, Gary?
Gary's a yes.
Chuck?
Chuck's a no.
Matthew?
Matthew's a yes.
Karen?
Karen, bye.
Mark's a yes. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you, guys.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, and this is typical every year this is being done. Veterans Agent has requested approval for the route, and he's provided the route for you for the Memorial Day Parade, which will be held on May 26, 2025 this year. And all the appropriate town staff have been involved.
Can I just make a comment? With John retiring, this will be his last for Memorial Day, correct?
Yeah.
Put a pin in that for a minute. But it might be worth one of us or somebody being delegated to shadow John or just kind of understand what needs to be done in order to make Memorial Day happen. I just, Bob, he's got, a lot of people copied, LCTV, police fire, DBW, the high school band director. But it might be a good idea from an organizational standpoint, a logistic standpoint, for somebody. I'm pointing at Gary just because I think he's the guy, but.
For the, you mean, you're talking about transition?
Just for transitioning to next year and then because, you know, we don't have any heir apparent to John right now.
That job is open. I did see it on the website.
It is. And we have received a few applications also.
And it does say...
One of which is extremely attractive.
It does say until filled. So we don't have to leave it open. If we have a qualified candidate, we can, we can act.
I mean, there's infrastructure knowledge there. I don't think John would say, no, I'm not going to tell you.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good call.
Yeah. All right.
I'll nominate Gary.
Well.
I'll send it.
Wait, we're not... I'll talk to John about it.
Thank you, Karen.
You just can have a nomination.
If nominated, I will not run. If elected, I will not serve.
I did want to mention that I know our packet isn't an update yet. We do have our, was it the marshal, Graham Marshall? It's going to be Commander Grimm from, he was Navy Coast Guard commander. So, yeah. So David Grimm will be our marshal for the parade. I know it was vacant on my packet.
Move that the Select Board vote to approve the Veterans Agent request for the approval of the Memorial Day Parade route and agenda on Monday, May 26, 2025.
Second. Move by Matthew, second by Chuck. Roll call vote, Gary?
Gary's a yes.
Chuck?
Okay.
Matthew?
Matthew's a yes.
Karen?
Karen's a yes.
Mark's a yes. So thank you very much. Moving on, department updates, Charter Committee.
Yes, sir. Sorry.
Yeah, you know, this is, I want to keep this a short discussion. You know, I did, I know I did mail out this, though they're not actively in this portion of discussion yet, the boards that we want the committee to look at and kind of determine, make recommendations towards those boards and committees' futures and things like that. We have so many that I think as a board, we can pretty much control and navigate through some of these minor boards, when to activate them or, you know, disperse them. But the ones that we want them to focus on, you know, Rob provided a list in the chair, and everybody have seen it, that, of who we want them to kind of look at. And he, we have a good spreadsheet here of those committees, the assessors, health, cemetery, housing, library trustees, parking wreck, planning board, trust fund, water commission, lake commission, school committee, Select Board. Those are all our elected committees. Now, three of those, the light commission, the school committee, and the Select Board are the only three by law that have to be elected. So the discussion, I guess, would be, do we want to really, in agriculture as well, but do we want the committee to really focus on the rest of those? Looking, you know, researching other towns and communities, what works, what makes sense with our changing community, really dive deeper into those, that group that I had just mentioned, to see if they should be continued to be, you know, elected or appointed, and by whom. Because if we really get down into all of these, it's quite an extensive list, and I think it might take up time. It really might not be necessary. I mean, are we, are we going to have a, you know, I don't know, you pick, a shade tree committee elected? No. So I think we can really lock it into these, this group of people.
So are you, are you asking, do we want the Charter Committee to only consider elected, elected boards when they're examining whether a board should be elected or not?
Yeah, unless, you know, I think individually, there could be a board or committee out there that may be the other way, right? Where something that currently is appointed that could be elected. I'm not aware of one of these that is in that situation. Maybe a council on aging in some communities. Are they elected? Or are they always?
No.
So I, as I looked at this, I couldn't find one that would have been ever an elected board anywhere. So I think if we stick, have them stick to about this dozen, this group of dozen boards and committees, I think it might make sense and use their time a little more wisely focused, if that's, and I don't think, Mr. Rouse, correct me if I'm wrong if I may, it's, you're not there yet. You're not even discussing that yet. So we have time to kind of look this over or add to or take away from. I know the light commission and school committee and Select Board, we take them off pretty much because they're, they have to be elected. So that leaves us with 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, nine committees and boards that really could be looked at, and whether we want them to continue to be the way they are or not.
I do think that's, I think that's the right priority, is look at those nine first.
Yeah. But please look at that sheet that I shared, because it does kind of get into all the boards and committees, how many members they have, and do we want them to get into that discussion of membership and things like that on some of these? Because times, times have changed. So I think if we focus it down to this smaller group, they can even get into that type of discussion on how many personnel. And to look at other communities and things that work have been successful, and we could identify that. Outside of that, I'll go.
Sorry. I agree with all of that. I would say that the only ones that are appointed that I would can be looking at are possibly the Zoning Board of Appeals and possibly the Finance Committee if they fall into, because I don't, like, I think you, personally in my, I think you probably either want the Zoning Board of Appeals or the Planning Board to be elected. So right now, we have one or the other. But if you're making the Planning Board not elected, then, then I would look at those more together, right? And I don't know about the Finance Committee. I'm just throwing it out there as something.
Typically, Finance Committee is always appointed.
Yeah. By different sources. It was crazy, the research.
Actually, and the ZBA and the Planning Board are typically also appointed.
Yeah. So, but the good, well, that's probably a good ad, Zoning Board of Appeals and Finance Committee, just the...
And I also, I mean, the library trustees, the one guy told us that they were, had to be elected when he was in.
I've only, my experience has been, they have been only elected. Yes.
So I would question whether your app shoots accurate or not on trustees. And some of...
I suspect the Housing Authority probably also needs to have elected.
They're appointed.
Are they?
Because you've got, you've got, you have a governor's appointment. You've got, then you have local representatives.
Can they all be appointed or?
I thought, I, I thought that that was...
Okay, that could be.
I could be, I could be wrong, but I thought that they were different appointments from different areas in the Commonwealth. Like I said, the governor.
Okay. But I mean, if the library trustees were, if that's true, the law does say it, then they can just pass over it. But I think it's one to look at just for research purposes.
We can look at that.
It is.
That'd be a global, our local place is appointed, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, but it's appointed in some places.
Right, it's elected here. That's why they put it on the list.
It's elected in a lot of communities.
So it's just, like I said, these are all very active, important boards to the community. Not that they all, every board is important, but these...
Yeah, I'm not saying that that's the right thing. I'm just saying...
These are the authorities that really govern a lot of our town business. And I think they, it's, it's time, that's why we're doing it.
So the only question I have on the other appointed boards is whether they should be, some of these are like appointed by, their existence is in the bylaws.
Yeah.
And others are at the will of the Select Board. And I don't know if there's a reason they should be bylaw boards versus not, like, the personal advisory is a bylaw board, as is Clean Lakes. But I don't know what, I think conservation is as well.
Fair point.
That would be the what I would clear up on those committees, whether they should be at the will of the Select Board to have that committee disbanded, or if it's a town meeting, create and continue that committee.
I know that there was a discussion at the meeting that I was, I was requested to attend. This, this came up in, because there are so many boards and committees here, and to take up the time for the Charter Review Committee, they potentially looked at, let's just highlight the bigger ones at year one, and then take it, then maybe take another opportunity down the road to look at, look at some others. Because you, there's going to be multiple town meeting votes for this process is typically the case. So really prioritizing is, was kind of a condescension.
So if, so the, so the question is, if they're at the will of the Select Board, right, then they shouldn't even rise to the level of anything for the Charter Committee? Because we can disband them anytime.
Right.
But if they're bylaw, then we, then what happens when there's the charter?
Yeah. Well, I mean, you're talking like Finance Committee, for instance. We don't, we already know by statute that they have to exist.
Right.
So it's, I guess, all you would get into is the appointing piece to that. Would you, do we remain the way we are with how we appoint the Finance Committee, or is there a way, a different form that makes sense on those? We could slide those over for a separate group of that type of discussion, because there are some boards over there, Finance, the one that sticks out. But is PMBC also jointly appointed?
PMBC has at least one from the School Committee.
Yeah, so I think that's another one.
There's anything, PMBC has one from the School Committee, and then if they're doing a project, then they have...
Ad hoc.
Ad hoc members.
But I feel like the first priority would be looking at the elected boards.
Sure.
The second tier is definitely Finance Committee.
Yeah.
But I don't know if there's any others in that second tier that rise to the level of scrutiny that we would, that I would want to see put on the Finance Committee, maybe PMBC. But, but Finance Committee is definitely like the one appointed board that I think would be worth looking at. And then, I mean, not to, again, not to disparage any boards, but the most of the rest of them seem to fall like in lower priority to me as far as the necessity for the Charter Committee to spend time on.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
All right. So this group, I think, makes sense that, and we have time, and, you know, I'll probably sit with the board and just kind of, or offsite, discuss some of this on how we, these other ones or twos that might make sense to look at for the other, the appoint, the appointing authority piece.
Right.
Outside of that. Okay.
A big thing, if I may make a suggestion, through the chair, when you're talking about the Finance Committee, to maintain their, basically, their position of authority, if you want to say. Because there are some communities that have the Finance Committee as advisory only. And here, I think, because of the success of, done so great financially that we just, we just maintain that, that, you know, that form of their responsibility instead of being...
To present, basically presenting the budget.
Right. Just don't have it, don't have their role changed whatsoever.
Yeah.
I think that's a name, I think that's a name only because I think the bylaw does say that it's an advisory to the Select Board.
Okay.
But there's, we've gone down this road before. I think, you know, there's, there's also a lot of Mass, Massachusetts statute that talks about the Finance Committee presenting the budget. And Select Board can disagree with Finance Budget and present our own budget. And that happened, you know, I know a few members were here, Tim, probably 20 or so years ago where that happened. The Select Board and the Finance Committee couldn't come to an agreement on budgets, and we presented two budgets at town meeting. So... So, I think, I, I do like the balance of power that way. I think we've come to a much better place where the two boards are together, but, like I said, with the, with FinCom, I think it's more of, how the appointing authorities, to make sure that we're not, some of, there's not other, you know, seeing individual, right now, we have two from school, two from Select Board, one from moderator, one from the assessor's office, and who else I'm missing, but water, light and water. I think it's, or water, but I think it's important to just relook that, maybe, maybe there's another board that we think now has gotten large enough where they should have a stake on the Finance Committee, that becomes a little bit more focused, if it's a park and rec, you know, do we put a, do we take one away from Select Board, move it over there, and we take one away, I don't know, but I think that's a discussion that we can have, but I'll, maybe I'll come back with that, those pieces, but this is the one, I think, that's most important, out of the gate, is the elected versus appointed, and then we can talk about, all right, well, these are going to be the appointed, how, by whom, and what makes sense for Littleton, with our growth and what's changed.
So, there's other boards that are in this state that get appointed by multiple authorities, like Affordable Housing Trust.
Yep.
I think, like, you have an appointment, and the Select Board has some, and so, we should probably look at how the appointments work on these multi, and I know that there's boards that Tim has appointments on, do we want to take away his authority, or give him more?
Yeah, I think it's, you know, yeah, there are, there are FinComs, we've talked about, the moderator appoints every member, so there's a lot of, we see a lot of the towns have different varying ways that they do business, but with the, with these specifically, I, I think, if we really look at the appointment authorities, and why, I, I think, first, though, the Charter Committee needs to get to a point of making recommendations on appointed versus elected, and then we can get into, they can get into the discussion on, okay, if it's appointed, by whom, and what makes sense to the, the committee.
That second tier.
For a recommendation, yeah. I would like to also add, we, we never really talked, I don't know if we put it in the letter on how often, maybe we have the Chair and Vice Chair present to us, or members, other members of the, that committee come in front of us, is, do we want to do it quarterly? I mean, what makes sense, how often do you want to see an update, and it's just, where are you at in the process? You know, what do you need from us? I mean, I, I step back, I mean, last meeting, I, this, the head cold piece, but I, it also made sense to me, you know what, I think when I was there, I was interfering a little bit, where I wanted to have the Collins Center take a little bit more, that back and forth, I think I might have been interrupting that a little bit by being in the room and talking, so I want to make sure that I give the committee time to breathe, and make decisions, and then I can kind of, maybe I come in quarterly, every third meeting or something, for question answers, and what they need, you know, I just want to make sure that they're free to, you know, keep just-
Dialogue.
Yeah, instead of, it just, it made me feel a little uncomfortable, so I wanted to make sure that we respect-
Quarterly, which sounds like a fine cadence to me-
Yeah.
-for reporting to us.
Just-
And we can, we can change it, if we decide there's more information we need, or, or there's not much update, then we can-
Yeah, it can be a 10-minute update.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, okay. But other than that, they're going fucking along good, they're digging into some language that they want to use and things, I think it's going to be a, their feet are under them now, so they're starting to move, so, it's good, good to see, good group of, good group of people running it too, so.
Did you have anything to add, Karen, or?
Um, I think the only thing I would add is that it, it sounds, it's a little hard to follow from a distance, but it sounds like, initially, we're going to, we're going to suggest that they stick with the, the first page of, of commissions and committees, but Mark, I thought you made a good point, that, you know, if they're doing, if they're making changes to the Planning Board, then they might want to balance those out with changes to the Zoning Board of Appeals. I think maybe we should just let them know that if they feel a need to pull or make changes in one of those other lists, to balance out what they're doing initially, you know, in this first round that they're looking at, that they should go ahead and do that.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I would like to herd it down, so.
Yeah, I agree with that, so, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's really all I had. Rob, you know, I want to give you, let Rob speak, if you think there's anything I might have missed, the question part, that we wanted to, some answers, if you, yeah, if you, sure, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Rob Rounds, 25, Juniper Road, and one of the nine people on the Charter Review. I think what you covered is correct, I just wanted to add, because you, you asked, where I, I'm continually reading and reviewing the charge that, that you gave to the committee, and really following that, so, we'll follow your lead, I'm not trying to be a rogue insisting on anything, but rather clarifying when I hear different things in the Charter discussion, to make sure that we're following what you want to do. In that regard, now, me is just one of the, the nine, I also have been making reference during the meetings with regard to the Government Structure Review that was released in July of 2024, and I've made a comparison of those comments and recommendations, because they actually do recommend some things, and look for the alignment with regard to your charge. I would just give you, give you that thought of, I'm using that as somewhat, when I see alignment, as being an indicator that this is directionally where you want us to go, because that's a longer document than the one and a half-page charge, I just want to throw that, for you to take a look at that in the future, but I wasn't asking for that, you've covered what I was asking, you know, of you, but I'll just throw that out in response to you asking.
And I know, I know this board, back last June, July, when we met for our goals session, and everything, we initially talking about this, we thought that that, that discovery and the recommendations from that report would kind of run hand in hand, more, more so to help justify that we needed a Charter Committee to get together and kind of make these changes, but also, I, I don't want it to completely dominate the committee's time with, oh, well, this is what the recommendations were, let's really attach and focus on that and run with it, because those are just recommendations too, but some of it definitely aligns really well with what we, we've charged that committee to do, so maybe we-
It's definitely, it's like another data point, right?
It is, I think it's important for that board, that committee to, to use it, but I, I just want to make sure that they're going in independently, clear-headed, and just kind of using that as a resource, that's-
Good.
Yeah, I would say, if I give a chair, if the Charter Committee sees something in the report, that, you know, they're not sure if we want them to look at, that's certainly, you know, the quarterly reviews are certainly a good point of clarification, but they can always come to us and ask.
Right. Yeah, I'll, I'll mention the quarterly, just update, it can be a five-minute, it can be a two-second, or it could be, you know, briefing.
I would need for them to, to rule out, you know, contemplating something that they think is very valuable that's in the report, just because it wasn't in our initial charge.
Yeah.
Good point.
When DLS did the structural review, that was focused more on financial policy, that kind of thing, I believe.
It was, you're right, it was.
Yeah, but there was, there was definitely parts of that that, that are in our, you know, in our charge, so we want to make sure that they, they're definitely-
There's definitely some alignment that can and should happen, I just-
Yeah.
You're right.
It's just, it's a, it's a tool to be used in alignment with.
Certainly.
Just to Gary, Rob, and any, Tim, obviously, you guys know the MMA, and the resources available through MMA, but MMA's got resources, like, how many cities and towns have elected planning boards, 246, how many are appointed by the Select Board, how many appointed by the town manager, how many appointed by a mayor, so it's, you know, those numbers are available to us, just a matter of knowing where to look for them.
Yeah, I think Collins can help with that, too.
Absolutely, yeah.
All right, good.
Anything further?
Nope, I think it's, it's going along well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we're doing public input? Anyone? Members' updates, want to start, Chuck?
Yeah, I'm going to get my head around it. I'm not picking up the last meeting, I'm trying to think of what we missed. We, we mentioned the robotics team, I believe, right? Yeah, if I, if something pops in my head, I'll, I'll swing back, I didn't have anything prepared, sorry.
Yes, mostly Orchard, so, Mark and I attended the last MAPC Orchard meeting, and it was good, it was less, I would say, less focused than the first one, and a little bit more aspirational, maybe, as far as goals that the town had for the way that we would manage the criteria we'd use to measure success around the Orchard. There was a very strong public sentiment that the Nishoba praying Indians should be included in every aspect of the, the planning process, and it was, it was very clear that that was, it, it came, it came in at the top of almost every list, which was, you know, interesting and heartening in some ways, and I think, I also met with John Brandsfield on Saturday, just briefly, just an informal conversation at the Orchard. We do have a discussion later about the, a pump for the well, but he is just starting to clear trees, they tried to start earlier, but the ground was too muddy, and they were, they were gouging it up, so he stopped. He's basically cleared some of the, the field, he's cleared and chipped some of the field near the upper barn, and he's just started cutting trees down on the field below the house. He also said that he, it was going to be a slow start this year, he's very busy with his regular tree business, but he has some enormous 4,000 trees in pots, or something like that, that he's ready to move, so, and then the last thing that he said was, that he is interested in posting regular updates, he's going to start a website with, with a regular news about what's going on at the Orchard, I know that that was something that came up at the Orchard meeting, and in addition, he said he would post on Facebook, I believe there's an Orchard page-
Yep.
-that he was going to post his updates or links to them on that page, and he was going to do a regular update of cadence of, like, what's going on, what he's doing, and like I said at the meeting, you know, he does a newsletter about his business, which is, he's clearly deeply involved in trees, he's a nerd, he takes pictures of trees that are interesting, and, and talks about them and stuff, so I, I'm sure that he'll be posting information about not just the, the, the work that he's doing on the Orchard, but his plans, the sort of native trees he's running into, what he might see about things that are going on, so I look forward to that.
Along those same lines, I reached out and introduced him to Nancy today, so that he could post something in the town newsletter.
Oh, great, perfect, thank you. And I think he should probably be on a podcast.
Baby steps, that's-
Understood.
Gary?
Oh, sure, um, let's see, I just want to thank everybody that came out for Candid Night, and just remind everybody that Candid's videos are out, and thank the Rotary once again, we're putting it on.
And to for moderating.
Oh, yeah, he's in the room, I got to thank him, too. As always, I take you for granted sometimes, so thank you. Difficult job, for sure. Let's see, I wanted to thank the Historical Commission for, you know, I, I was, I had plans with family to attend the Concord ceremony, so I was in Concord, but I, from everything that I've seen and read, just amazing, amazing day and event for Littleton, from Liberty Square all the way to Fay Park, and just wanted to thank them for all the work that they put into that, so, it was, and I, I believe we had pretty well attended, and I went, I did make it by to see the bouncy houses coming down, so I know that they were up at Fay Park. I attended the COAs, had a lunch, luncheon today that LWD put on, they're up at the, perfect, this time they timed it perfectly with vacation week, so, they did the high school cafeteria, when I, I went in, it was so well-attended, it's, they were, they were wall-to-wall, that whole cafeteria with tables, so, but it will be nice when all of that can be over here into this building next door, but it was a great event, and I wanted to thank them for that, because it's one of those things, community, great community outreach event. The, you know, something we talked about several meetings back, when we had Mr. Ralph Bisdorf come in, the coach and, of the Olympian-
Yeah.
-for fencing, and I, I just kind of came back up in my head that, my goodness, I said I, I wanted to potentially get him, you know, recognized more with a sign entering Littleton, we have an Olympian that lives in, in town, I think it's worthy of the same thing as, you know, when we have a high school champion at something, we put it up, somehow recognize that, so I, I guess, Jim, I'd, I'd like to charge you with, help me, is it School Committee, is it Park and Rec, is it who, or is it just through us that we come up with a signage recognizing this home of, you know, Ralph's-
Okay.
-Bisdorf, Olympic gold medal champion.
Yeah, historically, they've been, they've been, the signs have been made by Mascor through the prison system.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I didn't, yeah, I wasn't even aware of that, so, okay, more, we can discuss more.
Yeah, I'll check with, actually, you know, I'll probably go to the state, to the travel and tourism, because they have a, they've got-
Standards.
Yeah, standards, and they've got examples, samples of famous people, or athletes, or whatever, historians in their community, so, for signage, so I'll, I'll do that, sure.
Yeah, maybe just do a little ceremony when we do put it up, recognizing, it'd be great. Let's see, I, I did have a little bit of comments on the Deb's Beds, I know, we had, I don't know, I must have read it in the Rotary, when I, I had, I had seen that this, Denise had talked about how the, they're being moved out of-
Just president of the Rotary.
Yeah, the Mill Building and things like that, so, I went down, I, I sat with Chris, who owns Dolphin Insulation, I was trying to make the connection, I didn't, silly me didn't have the connection of how, what was even going on, so I went and I sat it, sat with Chris, the owner of Dolphin Insulation, for about an hour, and we talked about the whole situation and space, and he's, you know, he's got some other things going on, potentially that he needs space, and he's outside of Littleton anyway, so that part, I think, was going to happen, but Deb's Beds was using space that Dolphin Insulation was-
Leasing.
Leasing, so, lo and behold, I, I went and spoke with Jim, Jim being who he is, hopped right on the phone with the business manager, you know, Lapoli's business manager, and just wanted to get, and like I expected, the developer, the business manager, wouldn't know anything about it, how would they-
Just unless, yeah.
Right, unless you're really vested, you've been in the community a while, you know, you know, what, what Deb's Beds even is, and what they do, so, and whether or not on the lease, it wouldn't further, they wouldn't know, so, had very fruitful discussions with them, Jim's been following up, obviously, this happened late last week, we had a long weekend for most people, so, we've been going back and forth as communication, but the latest, you can give the latest update.
Well, the latest is working with their independent, with their leasing company, they're going to identify free space within, within a building for Deb's Beds, so Lapoli is going to, has given that direction to, to the leasing company to find, find them space.
Yeah, so, it's outstanding, it'll be, it's an outstanding story, so, at the end of the day-
Yeah, it's, it's fantastic. Gary, thank you for alerting, alerting us, without a doubt.
And thank you, Jim, that's really all I have, so, I'm sure I'm missing a bunch of things, and a bunch of thank yous, but-
Do you have anything, Karen?
Um, no, not really, thank you.
Mark, I'll throw just one thing out there, if I may.
No, you lost your chance.
Forfeit my time, I yield, I yield my time to the chairman. I know there's a lot of people, you know, trying to get their brush burnt, and whatnot in their backyard, just make sure that you do call the fire department, or go online to the fire department website, and $10 to get a burn permit, and the, the chief, or the fire prevention officer, has the right to shut us down, or anything that's really windy or anything like that, so call before you burn, just to give them a heads up of where you're burning, and that ends on April 30th, it's the last day to burn, so it's January 15th through April 30th, so.
And there have been a lot of brush fires in the area, so-
It was a big one, yeah, right next to the cemetery on Newtown Road, Black Gardens, so-
Two in Westford lately, one in Acton over the weekends.
The median in Boxboro, the, yes, just be careful.
Please, get your permits, yes.
Right.
Thank you. I attended, a few weeks ago, I attended the MMA was, had something about how to host citizens academies, which I think would be a good thing for us to look into in the future, they usually do like a eight or 12-week crash course on how town, how the town functions, you know, they do things like, this is, I attended a Select Board meeting, how the Planning Board works, what the building department does, what the fire department does, and you get to, they, some of them do fun things with the fire and police- does, and you get to, they, some of them do fun things with the fire and police departments. You could, you know, go riding in a cruiser or go up the ladder truck or, you know, all that fun stuff. So it's something we probably should look at doing at some point in the future to get more community engagement, get more people that will, you know, potentially run for these elected slots or volunteer for these openings. So I think it would be a good thing to look at. I held office hours a few weeks ago. I think there's office hours this Friday.
I don't, I'll have to look at the schedule. I don't remember.
I wanted to remind people the town meeting is coming up on the 6th. There will be a presentation on Shaker Lane beforehand at 6:00 PM in the cafeteria, town meeting at 7:00, and elections on May 10th. If, I believe you can go into Diane Corry's office and early vote sometime pretty soon, but you can check with her on those dates. I did attend the Patriot's Day event at Liberty Square. It was very well attended. I wanted to thank the Historical Commission for all the work that they did. I did not get to go to the events at Fay Park, but I've heard that it was very well attended. And kudos for the Historical Commission and Historical Society for putting on a great event.
Yeah, great.
Thank you, Patriot. A little Patriot beverage.
Yes. I heard they had a blow up bouncy, a blow up tavern.
Really?
Yeah.
They did. They did.
Blow up tavern?
How was it? Were you in there?
I did not make it.
Surprise, surprise.
So do you want to talk about any of the projects?
Sure, that'd be great. A couple of things I would like to, I let the Select Board know that we had been contacted, the region had been contacted by Senator Warren's office. And they, as a result of the meeting we had had back in December in Lemonster, the congressional directed spending process was available. There is, and they, they range from anywhere from $100,000 to $3 million. And we, the region is, is submitting EMS services. And so the chief, Chief McCurdy is, is closing that loop with that, with that particular situation because that is due, the application and the request is due for the end of this week. Another financial positive thing that we have is, we were alerted by, from Congresswoman Trahan's office that the, our request for the $1 million to help with the sewer project to find a second discharge location, it was, there was strong anticipation that it would, it would not get funded, that Democrats would not, the Democrats wouldn't get their stuff funded. However, it is still eligible. We have been notified, so we're updating that, that submission. And that requires just an updated letter from the chairman, please, just to sign that. And I've received updated letters from Representative Arciero, Senator Eldridge, LWD, also Mr. Lapoli, because it was, because clearly we are looking for, to help that economic development project. And move, and we're moving forward with that. That is due tomorrow. I'll submit all that stuff tonight. And we have, tonight, as you can see later on, we have the authorization to sign the contract for $160,000. And that was for the million dollar earmark that was, that, that the town received through, through the governor's office with the help of the Select Board and Mr. Lapoli to be able to get that. And.
With the infrastructure.
Correct. It's for the infrastructure. It's called the Housing Works Infrastructure Program Grant. And so we're moving forward there. 36 King Street, as you know, is going to, is, is being delayed a little bit. So now we are having discussions with the contractor with extending that contract. And that is, that is it.
Does sewer project work, skidding away, underway again in the next couple of weeks on?
It is. It, it is. So they want to make sure, because the paving plan and the finished stuff is all on, on the town's website. The infrastructure, as you know, has already started regarding at the site. And continuing, and we are going to have a meeting, that the team here is going to have a meeting with LWD and the developer for 550 King Street to make sure for the next round of funding that there is, there's no duplication of requests, which would jeopardize anything like that. And figure out how we're able to have a balance with that between all three, all three entities.
And the Shattuck Street opening is May 16? Is that correct? The grand opening?
Oh, my goodness. Oh, yeah, the Center on Shattuck. Yes, May 16th at 1 o'clock.
And we don't have a groundbreaking date for the ceremony for 550 yet?
We do not. We do not. And we're, that is a discussion every week of, do we have it yet? Do we have it yet? So we're, we continue to, the team continues to, to stay on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, Select Board Town Administrator Updates, a discussion and vote on a one-day liquor license process.
This was something that the Select Board had made, asked me to inquire with Town Council on. And you have a language before you that, in the event that the appropriate public safety people express that there is no areas of concern, that I have, the town administrator has the authority to approve it. However, if there are some complications that any of the public safety departments do see, it is then referred to the Select Board for further discussion and, and understanding and for the Select Board to take the vote.
So this will be very similar to like the gift process where instead of us approving the gifts, the town administrator can approve the liquor licenses, and then we'll just be notified of the approval. So is there any discussion?
Well, just, we're, we're the appointing authority. I just, I just, are those other communities where the town administrator, the town manager is signing off on those? I'm assuming the Select Board is also the appointing, the, the liquor board?
Yes. I mean, there are, depends on the, on the size of the community. Like in Beverly, when I lived in Beverly, I was on the liquor commission. That's, that was independent. But the Select Board, as I worked in, in some communities, they have, the Select, the Select Board was the, was the appointing authority, signed off.
Essentially.
We're designating him as our.
Exactly.
So 13814 allows us to do that, too?
Yes, it does, according to Town Council. Yep.
That's exactly.
So he can approve licenses, but he cannot deny licenses?
Right.
For the one-day licenses?
One-day licenses.
Yes.
As long as you get all your signups.
Yeah.
Sure you want all that responsibility?
Belts and suspenders, I'm good.
I have no objection to this.
This was part of the process to try and streamline our meetings and make.
Yep.
And our, streamline our packets. So. Any comments, Karen?
No, thank you.
Moved at the Select Board vote to authorize the town administrator to approve special licenses, also known as one-day liquor licenses pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 138, Section 14.
Second.
Moved by Matthew, second by Chuck. Although some favor Gary.
Gary's yes.
Chuck.
Chuck's aye.
Matthew.
Matthew's yes.
Karen.
Yes?
Mark said yes. Thank you. Discussion of the plans for performance evaluations for the town administrator, police chief, and fire chief. So I asked all of our, these are our three direct employees, I asked them to fill out their, the performance evaluations are in two sections. There's basically the goal section and then the personnel section. I asked everyone to fill out their personnel section so that we could review it and get feedback back before the elections, so that it's the sitting board that does it. I know the, the first year when Gary and I started, we were reviewing people doing reviews that we had no real business doing the reviews on. So this was just a way of getting that. So I, I, some sent the reviews to everyone, some sent the reviews to me. I will forward them to the rest of the board. If everyone could respond, give your comments or your feedback to me, I will collate it and come up with a summary feedback and, you know, average evaluation based on that. And then I don't know how people want to feel about presenting that. I didn't ask people to do the goal section because the goals, you can weigh whether they completed their goals, whether you're on the board or not. So we don't have to give them the complete review yet, or we could. I don't know what people think about that. And some people didn't, like, Chief McCurdy doesn't have goals because he didn't go through the process last year, so.
We always, we always run into the problem of, you know, any feedback we give has to be public. When, and then it's official.
I thought we figured that out, that we didn't have to do it publicly if we don't do it in a meeting.
Well, the review, the document is a public record, so it'd be in a packet, if you will, so that everyone can see the results, if you will. But that's, I don't think it's any further than that.
Basically, as soon as it gets aggregated, then it has to be, in order for you to share it back with us, it has to be public. So, so I'm, I guess I'm okay with that process. It's, you know, but we, we've struggled with a way of presenting feedback to our reports without, you know, showing everybody, airing the dirty laundry if there is any. Not that there is any, but in this case. So I'm fine in this, today, I will be happy to send you my feedback and let you aggregate it and then just see the result when it gets shown to everybody else.
And all this gets held, even your input gets held at HR, I believe, for.
Personnel file.
Three to five years. I can't remember.
Okay, sorry, that's fine.
It's public, it's public record.
The only question I have is in the aggregation, I think Donna Brua had done that for us in the past.
We've done it both ways, where we had Town Council do it in last year. I think I did it, because it came in after. So if you'd rather have Town Council do it, I don't have a problem with it, do.
Are you, are you cheaper than $260 an hour?
Yeah, let's have Mark do it.
Watch your mouth.
Okay. Great. Okay.
So I will get those out in February. Can you give me feedback in the next week or so that?
Great. Thank you.
Request by Brandsfield.
Yes. So one of the things I talked to John about was the well. He, I know that, I don't know if you all read the email from, from Eric and Steve. Steve said, you know, 10 gallons a minute isn't enough to do anything. But what John is going to do is he's going to basically pump into a cistern and then use the cistern to water when he needs it. So the well, the existing well, even if it's only 10 gallons a minute, is going to be sufficient for his needs for the immediate future. He talked about the fact that in the long term, he will need a more significant well, but that he was going to pursue grants through MDR, which are available for the town to apply, but he would fill out paperwork in order to help offset the cost, which could be significant. So in my mind, he's willing to basically work with us to only use, only require a pump for the existing well, which is in the order of $2,000 to $3,000, which is going to get him through this year. I spoke to Ryan Farrar about this, and Ryan pointed out that in the, in the lease, there is language that says that.
Yes.
The S C is responsible for irrigation equipment. My contention is that that would be, that this is more like infrastructure. If, if the house wasn't getting water, you know, we would consider deliver, delivery of water to the house or the barn part of, part of the infrastructure that the town would be responsible for, because we are responsible for capital improvements. This is a small amount of money, which wouldn't normally rise at a level of capital, but I would advocate for us to install this pump as part of the infrastructure of this, of the, of the orchard that we are responsible for as a town. And that's why, that's what I'm bringing to you as a board.
Okay. I, I mean, that, that makes sense. The, I'm just thinking of the bigger picture of the well itself. We are the, we're the owners. The property needs a well for a tenant to, to live in. So I think long-term, we have, I, I like the MDR idea and the grant, but I, I do think we need a, a plan in place to, like we talked, when we have to replace a joint effort, when we have to replace a roof or something major structurally over there. I know we have a plan for that.
Well, I mean, the house has, has town water, right?
Yeah.
So we're talking about a well would be added only for irrigation of the APR land.
Yeah.
So we can separate the house.
Right.
Habitability from the infrastructure for the, for the farm, which I think is an important distinction. And I do think that if we do need to put a well in for the farm, which I think is, based on the language of the lease, is our responsibility as the owner, I think that that is where the grants from MDR would, would really probably be very likely to help us to fray a substantial portion of the cost.
This buys us time, if nothing else.
Well, this, that definitely buys us, like, a year at least, I'd say, until we have to worry about a well. And John is planning ahead. I mean, I think he will give us.
Sure.
If he knows the, the grant cycle, and he does, he'll say, okay, November, we're going to start, let's start talking about this grant cycle.
I'm surprised to get any water out of that well. I was surprised just to hear you say that. I was like, wow.
Well, Skilling's tested it, and they got 10 gallons a minute with a, with a, with a test pump, a temporary pump, so.
Yeah, I think in good faith, especially with him already committing that he's going to update the, you know, he's being a good tenant, you know, a good.
He's taking all the trees out, you know, that we were.
Yeah, so I think that, at this, at this price, I'm on board.
We have money set aside for this, correct? I mean.
We, we.
Well, there's $50,000 that we allocated for the orchard before that I don't think we've spent all or most of.
The things that potentially could.
We didn't earmark it for anything specific, but I suppose if we're going to do a transfer, that would be the obvious place to take it from.
So the lease payments and things from the orchard now are not being set aside into a separate fund currently. There is no line item in the budget for the orchard for this year. There will be lease payments coming in, but they're just going to the general fund. He's already made the first payment.
Yeah, we'll, we'll just have to, we'll have to deal with that after this, after town meeting. We'll have to figure out how to, how to approach that. Karen, do you have any input on this?
I'm just curious. So we're, we've been talking about hiring a, some sort of management company or consultant. Where, where is that money going to come from?
So that money, the.
Is that also from the orchard line?
Yeah, that, the, the intention was to use the lease payments to, to pay for that. I am speaking to MDR about that, and they, I haven't closed the loop with Delia yet, but that should be, it may be that, that, that MDR will do it as part of their normal oversight.
Oh, wow.
I'm not going to promise that, but it's a possibility. If not, I don't think we're talking about a substantial amount of money. This is a service that conservation restrictions get, get reviewed every year. It's, it's not an uncommon thing to happen.
That was in a few thousand dollars.
So we're thinking in terms of annual review?
Correct. Yeah, annual review. In the, yeah, in the range of a few thousand dollars is what we've heard.
Okay.
And do, so do you have any objection to the pump?
No.
Okay. Do we need a motion, Jim?
Um, no.
Okay. So thank you for the, thank you. That's all I think I've got for the orchard today.
Okay, moving on. The contracts for, with TEC for design services.
Yes, this is what I was referencing earlier, earlier, Mr. Chairman. It's the $160,000 contract for TEC-ing for the design services for the infrastructure grant program, up at 550 King.
Any comments?
Glad to see the money's there.
Yeah.
So.
All right, let me find the, move at the Select Board vote to authorize Town Administrator James A. Duggan to execute a contract with TEC Inc. for $160,000 for design services to support the $1 million Housing Works Infrastructure Program Grant for public infrastructure improvements at 550 King Street.
Second.
Moved by Matthew, second by Chuck. Although some favor Gary.
Gary's yes.
Chuck.
Chuck's aye.
Matthew.
Matthew's yes.
Karen.
Karen's yes.
And then Mark said yes.
Great. We have Mr., we have Town Council that has joined us for the, for item number five.
Okay. General update and vote to remove any articles from the town meeting warrant and discuss town meeting related matters.
Tom, if you just, let me just give a, a, a brief introduction. Here we have the, the, the general update here. We've got approximately, I think we have 33 articles. And, and we wait for the town moderator to determine what will be in the consent agenda, and then, so that is still be determined. But getting back to what you pointed out earlier, Mr. Chairman. Chairman, we have, on May, on May 6 is the town meeting. We have the Select Board Finance Committee Joint Meeting at 5:15 that is held, which is followed at 6 o'clock by the Sheik O'lane Information Session, right downstairs in the cafeteria over there, and then until about quarter of, 10 minutes of seven, where we will roll right, go right into the, the gymnasium for, for town meeting. We have town council that is with us tonight for some amendments to, that are open for discussion, I believe, on 12 and 13, articles 12 and 13 regarding the surplus of, of town hall.
Just real quick, I, I did notice that the, the discussion, as listed says to remove or add or remove articles, we, we don't have, at this point, we don't have the authority to remove an article. We have the authority to not move on an article for at town meeting, correct?
I believe that's correct.
Okay, so it, it, it's kind of like a typo in the, Tim, Tim gave me that crash course when I was talking to him.
It's already printed in the paper.
The board could reopen the warrant for the purposes of removing an article and then immediately close it back up, but council may have some thoughts about that. Proper notice to the voters, but I'd be less concerned about losing an article than trying to add one.
Yeah, yeah, good point.
Shall we turn it over to Tom?
Tom, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, the floor is yours.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Tom Harrington, Town Council. Nice to see you all.
Of course.
So, I'm going to bring you right to motion, or Article 12. And so, what we, so, so I assume you have the rewrite of the motion for Article 12 in your package, and so I'm going to go right to it and walk you through it. And so, the goal here was to present two votes to town meeting. The first vote, which is the first motion, and essentially what it does is it takes the, the special act that we're proposing and breaks it into two. The first component of it is, is to seek only the authority from the legislature to avoid the procurement and construction statutes, other than the obligation to pay prevailing wage. And so, that now reads as Section 1 of the Act, and Section 2 of the Act is just that this act will, shall take effect upon its passage. So, what this does is it seeks authority only for the ability to avoid the typical procurement and, uh, construction statutes as we move towards, and it identifies three projects. Project 1 is the conveyance, lease, design, development, construction, operation, and maintenance of affordable rental housing at 37 Shattuck Street. Project 2 is the lease of 37 Shattuck Street by the town to use as town offices, and the third is the acquisition, design, development, and construction of new town offices located within the town of Littleton. So, the, I think the, the strategy, the working strategy is that we would convey to a developer 37 Shattuck Street, we would lease it back from the developer while a new town hall is being constructed for the town, and that we wouldn't move out until that new, until that new town hall is ready. So, this, I, I think the idea here is that it, it gives the voters the opportunity to just vote on this, which gives us the authority to go forward and make our plan. Are there any questions on that, or should I move to Motion 2?
Tom, I have a question.
Okay.
So, I, I, I know that with the low income housing tax credits, it's imperative that the developer, whether it be in whole or as a partnership, be an experienced nonprofit affordable housing developer that has success in the low income housing tax credits arena. With that said, if that entity of the partnership has control of the location, it ought, for us to lease back the, to stay, to stay here and then lease the space that we're in.
Right.
And I know that what our goal is for, for, for nominal fee, but if it's a for-profit developer arm of that, won't we be required to pay the, the real estate taxes? Pay ourselves?
Yeah, yes, we will. Yeah, so if they, so I, so it's a good point, Jim. So, if we're, if we're selling it, you know, if we convey the property out, and remember, so the, the trick here is that we need to give the developer sufficient control over the property
Right.
so that they can go forward and get their tax credits lined up, so that those are in place, because that, that's the way they're going to make the profit on the construction is through the tax credits. And, and we, we know we're going to need to give them a window of, I, I think Judy Barrett quoted, three to four years, or two to four years to get that done.
Correct.
So, they need sufficient control of the property to do that. And if they have that sufficient control, then yes, I think we would likely, either they or us would be required to pay real estate taxes on the property.
But, it, sorry, you're not, so, but if, if the, if the partner, the, the nonprofit is the controlling partner of the project, and is the lead applicant for the low income housing tax credits, they then have control of it, so they're nonprofit. So, we're not, they're exempt from paying real estate taxes. So, hence, we're, we don't have to pay that.
Right, so if, so I, so I think I agree with you. If the correct entity takes control here
Right, okay.
Taxes might not be assessed.
Thank you.
So, so just to back up, though, the first motion doesn't transfer control of anything.
It doesn't.
It just gives us the right to petition the legislature for the special act. It doesn't, we're not talking to any developer during this time. It gives no transfer of control. It just moves the special act forward.
Correct. All the, yeah, so it moves the special act forward, and we can't start talking to the, to any developer until the legislature approves the special act.
Which, which is a
Year.
A year, yearish process.
Yes.
Correct. Typically, nine months to a year. So, I, I have another question about the nonprofit having control. So, I'm, I think I'm concerned about getting into a situation where the town doesn't have a place to move, and we don't have control over town hall. So, obviously, whatever arrangement we make, we're going to need to have, you know, language in it that we don't have to move until certain conditions are met. Is that going to create a, a problem or a conflict with the controlling entity having enough control that the state is going to say, yeah, you have enough control for us to give us, give us, give you these tax credits?
Good question.
I mean, maybe that's, maybe that's a future U problem and not a current U problem, but you'd use, follow me? I don't think that's a, so, I don't think that's a problem. Okay. I mean, I, I think they can still have sufficient control of the property, and we can still tell them, and if you, if, if you jumped down to Section 4 of the, of maybe the extended act, which would be Motion 2. Yep. It says, "The town of Littleton may lease back from the developer described in Section 3, the building located at 37 Shattuck Street for use as town offices until such time as the town of Littleton has relocated its town offices to another location in town." Okay. So, the, the idea there is that the special act, it's kind of baked into the special act, that we're not leaving until we have a place to go. Okay.
This, yeah, I, this is one of those things at town meeting, you're, there's a lot of language in here that's not confusing enough, but.
So, Section 1 just says we can apply for the special act. It doesn't bind us to anything.
Yep.
Right? Even if the special act passes, we don't have to do anything. Section 2
That's where we're giving control.
Is transferring control, is allowing us to transfer control.
So, what happens if one, we didn't, we don't have to go down that road yet, but I was just curious, is there, when we're talking the tax side of it, where else, anywhere else in the state does a town offices at any level lease? I'm assuming they lease property from other
City of Baltimore.
So.
Do they really?
But that's probably, probably not leasing from a nonprofit. I don't know if this is unprecedented or not, Tom. I, I mean, you, I know you support a lot of communities. This is something that, you know, we're, we're sitting here leasing from a nonprofit. It's cir, it's circumventing for, for certain, but it's, seems like lurk, legal circumventing, if you will.
Well, yeah, so I, I guess it's, yeah, this is a pretty specific situation that we're in. It's not unusual for a town to lease town hall.
Right.
You know, oftentimes, so I can give you an example, in Wellesley, Wellesley just redid its town hall. They just moved back in, I think, January 1, but they had to lease office space for about two years while the rehabilitation took place. So, the idea of leasing it is not unusual. And when you're leasing, you know, one of the things you typically do is to pay real estate taxes.
Right.
I'm just, I'm having a thought, because we hadn't really talked about this particular issue yet. I'm wondering if it's because, if we're leasing it for a municipal use, then, then the tax would go away. I, I will check into that and report back on that.
I mean, that's a big piece, obviously, for me. I, maybe, I mean, everybody else has different thresholds on this, but it's a big piece for me.
Big piece that we, is the big piece, Gary, that we not pay taxes, or is it just that we not have to pay to lease space while the new, the new space is being constructed?
Yeah, I mean, that's a, to me, that's important, but it really doesn't come into play too much until we get to Motion 2. So, one, I'm just trying to get through the, the legal piece, which, you know, I know that's why you're here, too, but just that whole piece of the, the taxes that was brought up, and what is the cost to town, which can be a lengthy time period. I mean, two, three years.
So, I think Motion 1 has no cost to the town. We're, we're just asking the legislator, legislatures to move this forward.
Yep.
Right? It's no cost, no binding, no
Yep.
There's no commitment on anything from the town.
Yep. And I understand, that's more of, we're doing an investigatory, we've got options, we're keeping options open on this property, that property, and this is kind of what, what any board would do, exploratory, see what's going to be best for the town, affordable wise and, and everything else, but.
What, what we know, correct me if I'm misspeaking, Tom, is what we know is, if we're going through this process, we're going to need Motion 1 at some point.
Yes.
And Motion 1 takes roughly a year to get through the legislature, legislature. So, we need, if we do this now, it gives us a year of getting our ducks in the row before we have to figure out what we're doing with this building.
Yeah.
Right. Now, Motion 2 gives us more, more authority. But, go ahead, Tom.
And I guess, said, said differently, Gary, this is a fairly complex transaction that we're talking about.
Yeah, I would say.
Right? And it's, it, this type of transaction was never contemplated by procurement laws or construction laws in Massachusetts.
Great.
Procurement laws are very much, if you want to sell something, you sell it, and that's the end of it. And if you want to buy something, you buy it, and that's the end of it. And those two are never connected. And, you know, the third piece, leasing it, is yet another thing that's not connected. Those are three separate procurements. But the only way, I think, for the town to, you know, kind of seek a creative solution here is to combine them all into one. And we need the legislature's approval before we do that. And it's, we wouldn't be signing anything under Motion 1. It just gives us the authority to go out and talk to people, and we couldn't even go out and talk to people until the legislator, the, the legislation is approved.
Okay. I, the precedence part is what scares me just a little bit, but, and that's just because you're putting the town in a situation where it could very well come in front of a judge who has to make a determination, as opposed to precedents, where we have something to reach back on. Maybe there is precedence that you just, you haven't come across, you know, for, for comparables, but, so.
Which is the situation you're talking about?
But I guess the liability, one doesn't have a whole lot of liability with it for the town.
No.
So, okay.
Karen, do you want, have anything you want to weigh in on?
No, I just think that we need to stay focused on the separation of these two motions, right? That's why we're doing this. Motion 1 has given the town your obligations. It just makes sense for us to be able to move forward if we decide we want to move forward, to not have to wait a year after that decision, right? So, I would just hope that we can all stay focused on the differences between the two motions.
Are there any more questions or discussion on Motion 1?
At town meeting, I'm sure there will be.
Yeah. Okay, do you want to explain Motion 2 again, Tom?
Sure. Okay, so now we've got Motion 2, and Motion 2 has, has an additional four sections. So, the first section authorizes the town to convey all a portion of 37 Shattuck Street for the purposes of designing, constructing, operating, managing, and maintaining affordable rental housing. Section 4 authorizes the town to lease back from the developer 37 Shattuck Street for use as town offices until such time as the town has relocated its town offices to another location in town. And Section 5 authorizes the town to acquire a parcel of land with a building or buildings thereon for use as new town offices. Section 6 says that development of the projects described in the assess may be conducted in one or more phases. Okay, so, with, with this authority, we can actually, you know, the first motion allows us to start talking to people. The second motion allows us to start entering contracts. But remember, we would still need, this, this doesn't authorize us to spend any money on any of these. So, we would still be required to come back to town meeting to authorize the funds needed to do one or any of those things.
I don't want to be the one that keeps talking here, but, so, alongside of this, I have to assume there'll be a legal binding contract for the developer, because when you have words like "the town of Littleton may lease back from the developer described in Section 3," that's, I, I hate the words "may" in a legal document. I like "will" or
Shall.
"shall," you know. So, "may," that doesn't bind us by any means, but none of this binds a developer.
No, it, no, so that, so again, the first part, Motion 1, allows us to begin negotiations. The second part, Motion 2, allows, gives us the authority we would need to enter into contracts. But absolutely, these would be, we would have, I, I mean, it's, it's honestly, it's three different contracts, right? It's, Contract 1 is what you're going to build, how you're going to build it, what, what's it going to look like at 37 Shattuck Street? You know, Authority 2 is the lease back, and what services are they going to provide to us while we're leasing back? And Contract 3 is, you know, what you're going to build and where you're going to build it for a new town hall. So, you know, it's, it's, the first is the, is the authority to negotiate, the second is the authority to contract, but none of this comes with the authority to spend any money. That still would only come from town meeting, at a future town meeting. That still would only come from town meeting at a future town meeting.
But at that point, we could be, this property could not, we wouldn't be able to move back into this property.
Well, because, so as I see this, Gary.
With tenants, though.
Right? So we, we're negotiating these contracts. We're not going to, the contracts are going to have to be subject to approval for the funding by town meetings. So either we get everything that we want for free and then we don't need to come back to town meeting. I don't see that happening.
No.
And so whatever money we spend, so whatever we, it would, it would be nice, I think, to bring back the, the exact contracts to town meeting to say, here's what we negotiated and it's all subject to your approval because we need the funding from you.
And, and those contracts would be structured in such a way that they interlock and they don't leave us, you know, with no town hall at any point, right?
Correct.
Like, I mean, if we're doing our job, right?
The problem with that, this is, this cart is already, this has already happened. So you're doing this so you can enter into contracts.
When you say this, what do you mean?
Motion, motion two, let's, okay, has to happen before we can start contract conversations. So you're, this has happened and been voted on.
Motion one has to happen before we start, have to start conversations.
Well, that's true.
That's correct.
But motion two does as well, does it not?
Motion two needs to occur in order to sign those contracts. So we can't sign, we can talk about the contracts once motion, you know, if the legislature adopts motion one. We can't even talk about them without that. But we can talk about them if we get motion one. We can actually execute them if we get motion two. But, but, and I know I keep saying this, but that doesn't authorize us to spend any money. We would still need that authority.
So, so just before, to reword it, we have to have motion one.
Yep.
And then we eventually will need motion two, either at this town meeting or a future town meeting where we need motion two or motion two prime where it also includes a funding source, right? So there's effectively a motion three somewhere in the future that says to allocate the money. If motion two doesn't pass this town meeting, though, motion two will come at a future town meeting with, probably with a funding request as well.
I guess that's my question. Why, why, why aren't we just letting motion two run down the road? Yeah, that's all, I mean, you might, you've been involved in this since the start. You've put a lot of work into it. Um, and I, I just worry that the community is going to see this and some of the same things that I see. There's a little bit of, if, if motion two, why are we putting it in November?
Well, because in my, in my opinion, I don't want to get, I don't want the message of what the intent here is. It's to get lost in the fact that, hey, look, we've got a beautiful new library. We've got a beautiful new center on Shattuck Street. We've got, looking at Shaker Lane School. We want something nice and shiny too. I don't care if we live in a treehouse, if we operate out of a treehouse. The, the, the main goal here is to bring forward the senior affordable rental housing. Because if you, because when all discussed the way I understood it, it was in a latter phase. Here's an opportunity to bring it to the, to the forward, to the head of the class, if you want to say. And it's going to be a lengthy process instead of it starting way back here and extending further out. So I think by not including motion two, you lose the essence of our intent here of senior affordable rental housing, not just a new town hall.
Okay.
We don't care about, I do not care, pair of that.
I, I get it. I, I just, um, I'm, I'm having trouble with motion two, that's all. I, I appreciate what you just mentioned and I, I think it's, I, I just don't see if that intent is going to translate for us. I, I think it's, uh, is there, you know, are there other ways to address the deeply affordable housing issue as opposed to this location? Is there, is, you know, the developer that we choose, is there other locations in town? Is there smarter locations? I don't know. And that's, I mean, I get, I get it, this is an opportunity.
Yep.
I do, I do get that. You know, I wish I had in hand, like I had mentioned, you know, before, that we have an absolute, this is what it would cost to chop this building, old pieces off, keep the newer piece, if you want to call it new, and add an L kind of over by Hager. Now we've got that whole side, right?
Yep.
And all this is open space and parking. What does that look like? What's the, that's to me, how we translate this more towards the townspeople so they can say, wow, that's going to cost us $45 million to do that, or it's going to cost us X opposed to this.
And, and quite honestly, and that, that's the goal of what you have, you five have tasked me with of getting that data. And we have really looked at subject matter experts that are in, in the profession, such as an appraiser that, that looked at this parcel and said, the, the buildings aren't, you know, worth that much at all. I mean, if, and to, to raise it would be $350,000 if you go down that road. The land, the land is the valuable part.
Sure is.
And it depends on, even still, you'd think it was, it was more, it's less, to put 40 units here in, in its place, the land value was, I think, is approximately $800,000. You put 60 units, it goes up another 40,000, 400,000, and then another 400,000 if there's 80 units here in a densely populated, that, that makes the land more valuable, but not the building. We are also going to, we're going to, we're continuing to have the discussions with the subject matter experts to, um, really get a back of the envelope number of what it would cost for both rehabbing the existing, this existing building, as is. And then also what it would approximate cost, what it would be for a new town hall, 30,000 square feet, two stories. And, uh, that's what we'll be looking at. That's what we're trying to explore.
I mean, I know previous boards, Chuck, I think you were on, kind of went down the throat a little bit.
Yeah. It's been, it's been a subjective conversation for 12, 15 years, yeah.
So I don't know, there's no data out there? I don't know if, I, I.
But, but also the, the focus that was, I believe, that was started with, when, as Chuck was on the board, I mean, it was the, the investments that the town made over the course since 2017. And it's, we're just, we're, you know, between the library, the senior center, Poxon Rec, uh, the school administration, the veterans office, they're vacating the building. Uh, so, but the vision was that that is what's going to happen with this building because it has.
No, I make, hey, listen, and I get there's a, that mindset drove a lot of this. You know, and there's the mindset that's, can we do something here still? And that, I get it, that's, those are the two competing pieces. And, and I, I just worry about, um, the control aspect. And that's, so wait, let me just go down, and I hate taking the time, I want everybody else, I'd love to hear what everybody else has to say. But if we pass one, we pass, we don't pass section two, section two is going to come back up later on because we still, now that we've got more information from the legislation, that this is something that's definitely can happen. Uh, we get a little more information, we still can have another bite at the apple. It's just, we're behind now.
It'll be a year from now.
Yeah. All right, go.
No, I was just going to say, one of the things that you're, you're missing, like, there is a strong, um, feeling of saving this building.
Sure.
You know, so it's looking at the value, what this existing, you, you've talked to some of those consultants and, and gotten, like you said, you're going to get the back of the envelope, kind of, what it would cost versus raising this building and then putting in 40, 60, 80, whatever it happens to be senior affordable.
Right.
Um, just for the, you know, the big college, you call it field, you know, the fitting into Littleton and, and creating this campus. If it were modern apartments, even if they were deeply affordable senior housing, it's not going to fit in the same way as this building being renovated.
A town hall being here.
Or the town hall being, yeah, whatever that happens to be. But this building being saved is one of the components. Regardless of what these two articles say, there's, there's, there's a faction of residents that very much want this building to remain intact. Whatever capacity that happens to be, I don't think that's as much a factor as reusing this building and its historical relevance, I guess.
I mean, I'm just speaking for people that have come to me, you know, in my own vision, people too. We drive through all kinds of towns that they're renovating these old brick buildings. Littleton doesn't renovate any of their, their buildings. And I said, well, how many brick buildings did we really have? We're just, we weren't a mill town.
Well, even Roden Bush in Westford, a wood structure.
So I, I think that's an answer that we're going to have to have, we're going to have to have an answer to, to that type of question because.
Without knowing the communities, I mean, you have a lot of gateway communities. You have a lot of money that, that is invested in those gateway communities for, for housing because it's got public transportation right there. It has a train station right there, not saying we don't, but they actually have, there are resources specifically aimed at um, communities like that, smaller communities. I can't, and I don't know off the top of my head, so I would love to understand a little bit more of those really more intimate communities of 10,000 to 13, 15,000 that's out there that, that, that the money's going, the money's going back in. And just from my, in my previous position, I remember in Western Mass, there was a major issue with a mill building that there was, there was zero interest in it and there was no state funding. And it was, uh, uh, there were, there were a number of different issues because it was.
Well, there's plenty of those out there too.
Exactly, exactly. So I'm, if, if, I'm absolutely, I'm not opposed to, to saving this building whatsoever. And I would absolutely support it. And I don't know the funding sources, whether they will take a different view on it and look at it and say, it's upside down. I'm just preparing for that message. Or, okay, it's a, it's a, it's a good return on the investment. I don't know.
So, so Tom, if motion two passes, we come back to a future town meeting asking for funding? We have contracts in hand and ask for funding to basically execute on motion two. If motion two fails, we come back to a future town meeting with what?
Well, so motion one would allow us to be, to start talking.
I'm assuming motion one passes. I'm saying if motion two fails, but motion one passes, what do we come back to a future town meeting with?
Some version of motion two, three, and four to allow us to execute contracts and to, you know, so with, with motion one, we can absolutely start talking to people, um, but we don't have the authority to do anything. And so negotiations are only going to go so far when you say, hey, I'd like to sell you this building. Great, let's talk about it, but we don't have the authority to do it yet. So we just, we wouldn't be as far along. We'd be more kind of broad strokes, but not really getting into details.
But the difference in the details are, we still don't have the funding source. So unless, I, I'm trying to figure out what the difference is, whether it passes or doesn't pass for motion two.
So what I would say is if motion one passes and motion two does not pass, and let's just assume the legislature adopts this legislation next February, March, that would, so we would have a few months to talk to someone, maybe before town meeting. But we wouldn't, we, we wouldn't get very deep into the contracts if, so, so then at, so assuming it passes before and we have time to talk to people, we would come into next town meeting likely looking for the authority to sell 37 Shattuck, to lease it back and to acquire a new parcel and construct a town hall. If we get both motion one and two, and it happens in advance of town meeting next year, we can come in with a much firmer plan about how it would all work and what the numbers would be on that, I think. Does that make sense?
So a, a little, so that would mean that we're basically going to come back then at a, let's just say that we were trying to get motion two, motion two failed this town meeting, we'd be come back in May with a new motion two, right? But then we're still doing a motion three in a future town meeting, asking for the funding? Or we're coming back at a future town meeting, if motion two fails, we're coming back with two and three at a future town meeting together? That's where I'm trying to get at.
Yeah, and I, and I, I don't know that I know the answer to that, Mark. It's, it kind of depends when the legislature acts on it and whether or not we have enough time to really, uh, you know, get our project out there and start talking to people about it and see what's possible and what's not possible.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think that's, Tom, I think, I think, I think that's the key because it's, it's all dependent upon the legislature and it's up to us and what we want to present it. If we feel in, you know, internally and say, look, we lesson learned, um, we need to be more proactive in vetting it and, and understand that, we're not going to do it in, in May. We probably won't do it until next November, a year from November. And it's, so that's a to be determined of where, where, where we are. And it'll also determine, another big thing that we have to also take into consideration, the partnership that we're looking to seek out there, whoever those partners are, what, where are they in their relationship? Where are they in that, in that commitment and about with, with moving forward? We don't, we don't know. But at least once they pass it, then we can start having conversations and saying, okay, developers, nonprofit, fall profit, get together and we'll lease it back to you from a dollar and you have control and, and that's it.
Okay. Do you have anything, Karen?
I guess one more thing I'd add, so if, if we just go forward with motion one, motions, the, and don't, and don't move forward with motion two, the authorities that are identified in motion two, we can get, we don't need a special act to do that. We can get those authorities from a, from town meeting. So it may be that we would just seek those authorities from town meeting.
Okay. Do you have anything, Karen?
No, um, well, yes. I, I just think we need to be careful when we're talking about these two motions. Yeah, motion one authorizes us to talk once it's passed. And I think, because I think that the timing and not losing a ridiculous amount of time trying to put this together is sort of the crux of why we're going to town meeting now. So I just, I just think we need to be really clear. And I think when we say, when, yeah, motion one authorizes us to talk after it's passed, not just authorizes us to talk, period. Because motion one doesn't authorize us to talk. Motion one authorizes us to talk subject to the legislature passing it. Motion one authorizes us to seek authorization to talk with the legislature.
Yeah.
And I think there's a big difference between those two things.
I, I just, I just wish motion one was the only thing on, on this warrant. And then we've got some time, we get some ducks in our, we, we can now really start to show what the, what it's going to look like if we were to do something here without all of this, um, what the cost would be, all of these things. And then we've, we can show, um, what that looks like, educate the public to say, you know what? It's just not feasible. As much as, you know, some members on the board might want to have town hall here, this is the reality. And that's some, kind of something that I've been after is what's that number look like? Is it just so ridiculous that, you know, the town won't swallow it, um, the next five years, you know?
And your concerns, your concerns are, are, are validated a thou, a thousand percent. It's, I think it's an exercise we should go through to understand the message of, of town meeting. We don't lose anything.
No, I know, it could be, it could be bloody though, we lose some time.
It, please. It's, yeah, I, I think it's something that you, we have to go through the, through the exercise and, and understand, you know, what information we will be able to be prepared when we do go back in next May or the following November, or whenever the case is. And, and, and understanding the pulse of what town meeting will be expecting from us. Because we lose nothing if we, if it gets voted down, in my opinion.
I, I think motion one.
Can I correct?
Go ahead, Karen. Go ahead, Karen.
I was gonna say, am I correct that, you know, Gary, I, I take your point that we need more information to be able to make our case, um, to go through with this. I wonder, you know, would anybody disagree with this characterization that motion two authorizes us to be, so that when we come back, because no matter what, we have to come back. So if motion two passes, it authorizes us to come back and be able to compare the cost of this deal that is negotiated versus renovating or doing, you know, doing nothing or et cetera, et cetera. Or, you know, when we go back to town, are we only going to be able to talk about how much it costs to renovate? But they're not gonna have the ability to compare and contrast that with the cost of what we can negotiate.
Yeah.
I, I don't know, I, I think, I, I take your point, Gary, but I think, I think if I were a member, a resident, I would rather compare A, B, and C than compare B and C and A's still not, A's still TBD.
Yeah. No, that's good, that's a good explanation for me. I, I guess when you see the terms of putting on, on, if two passes, yeah, a yes vote, we've just created a, let's be honest, a one-lane road.
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
Why?
Because.
Why?
You've just sold the property. You, you, we trust, well, you haven't, but you, you've basically said, you've put it, you've put a, an enormous amount of faith in whoever we partner with, which let's, let's say it's Napoleon's streets. And I know they're a huge partner in town for other things.
Yep.
So we do hold a lot of cards there and as well as they do. We want a good relationship. But the issue is, we don't own this, we, we, we're trying to contract, they say, no, we can't come to an agreement. We cannot come to an agreement on a, on getting a contract out and how all these things that we want, that we're putting in, into this. What then?
Yeah, but I don't, I, I, I think we're getting, I think a little bit we're getting lost. There, there, there's not as much negotiation as you think. And hear me out for a second, maybe I'm, I'm off, I'm, I'm, I'm off.
I'm just thinking what other people.
So it's, 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 it's really, it's, it's straight numbers of what it would cost for, for rehab. It's a straight number, what the value of this property is. It's a, it's a pretty straight number based upon what a new location would be. And, and it costs us nothing for them to go through the process because they have to present to the state and ask for the housing tax credits. We're not putting any money into the deal. It's not like we're, we're nego, you know, we are putting, we're making an exchange with the property, but those numbers are secure by, by, by the appraisal. And by law, we can't pay more than the appraisal. So, and here, okay, we have property X, Y, Z, and here's a location for 30,000 square feet and it's $500 a square foot. And it's, it's, it's straight, but there's no negotiation. So it's more of a getting all the data as tight as possible for where we're concerned and have no surprises as, as far as we're concerned. They can have the surprises all, all they want between themselves and, and that partnership with the development for this as they go through the state process. We have nothing to do with that. I think we're in a, and they could turn around and say, we can't get the, you know, they may not be able to get the tax credits for two rounds, but they'll get the tax credits, but it's, it's like MSBA funding. So it's, and meanwhile, we're here for a dollar a year. And then, and the goal, and we're waiting to develop senior affordable housing and hopefully it's in this building. I would love that. I would absolutely love that.
Thank you. Good evening. Steve Van Nooty, Finance Committee. I just wanna voice my concern one more time on section four. It says, alas, sentence, has relocated its town offices to another location in town. Doesn't mean we, that doesn't preclude us from having to move to a temporary location. We shouldn't be allowing that. I don't know how binding this, this article is in contract negotiations, but it should refer back to the town hall being built in, up above, number three.
Permanent location, is what you're looking for.
Yeah. I know, Tom, your, your office kind of shot it down the last time, but it's open-ended. I, I, I don't think that's in the best interest of the town.
Can I respond to that?
Please.
So, I'm concerned, Steve, but I think where we pin that down is in the contracts with whoever we strike a deal with and not in the special act. Because the special act is specific. And, you know, there might be a reason that we want to move to a temporary location as opposed to a permanent location. But we don't have to. But if we say, you know, we're only going to move once our permanent location is complete, then, then the legislature has told us that's what we're gonna do. We can still do that through the contract. I, I, I prefer to, I prefer to handle those types of things through a contract where we're gonna get into real specifics and not through, you know, kind of a 14-sentence special act. Because I, I think it, it can come back to bite you when you're not expecting it. That's been my experience anyways.
True, true.
But I, I take the sentiment as, I agree with the sentiment wholeheartedly. I just think it's, the, the place to address it is not in the special act, it's in the contracts.
Yeah, through the chair. I, um, you know, I thought, I thought about that as well, but you know, I think Tom brought up a good, like, any, any town hall that's ever moved, renovated, rebuilt, the location, all the employees are moving to a temporary location while that's being done. So either way, I felt a little more comfortable with that because if some crazy thing happened and this town hall had to go to a temporary location like the fire department did during renovation, I mean, that's.
My fear is we go there and we never leave.
Yeah, that's, okay. Now, now that's more, that would be a more of a concern.
That's my fear as well.
Sure.
And.
And then you're.
Especially getting into a position where we go there with, with promises that don't pan, pan out.
Things happen.
Right, right. Sure they do.
People change.
But I'm not convinced that there's any, well, I'm not convinced there's any way to completely avoid that risk. But I guess I do think with Tom, like, probably the place to do that is in a contract, in a, in a web of contracts. What's gonna be all these interlocking contracts with all the different, uh, transactions that are gonna go hand in hand here?
So, I, I'm just reading section four and it says, until the town offices, until the tunnel Littleton has relocated its town offices to another location in town. It doesn't bind us to move until we want to move then, effectively, right? They can't kick us out.
That's, that's the purpose. I mean, as a for instance.
There's nothing in here that says they can kick us out.
As determined by the select board or?
It says, until we have relocated. It doesn't say that we will relocate on any, it doesn't have any event under which we will relocate. It just says until we relocate.
I can play whatevs, you know?
Well, like, what if?
I'm a developer, just happen to be a developer.
What if something happens to 37 Shattuck Street? While we're there, while we're. It becomes uninhabitable for some reason.
Yeah.
Right.
Right.
Like, know what hospital did?
Like, uh, glossed the city off.
Flood.
Because that, we had to move out because of the wind from the tower. It was unstructured, had to move out for, for two years.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I know the, the moving out part and, and temporary places, that's unsettling to a lot of people and I get it, because it's a pain and it costs the town money to do that as well. But, you know, that, the concern, the concern there would be, I'm a little bit more, I feel like there's a little bit more control through contracts of that. And depending who it is, if it is 550 developer, there's a whole lot of negotiation that's still going on with 550 on a whole lot of other things that, um, that developer depends on us for and vice versa, back and forth. So I think, um, as long as we have a lot of that at play, I'm, that developer doesn't make me as nervous, believe it or not, as somebody else that comes forward with a slam dunk, oh my gosh, this person, this developer, it sounds like this is a much better deal for us. Some, maybe an unknown entity or someone new in the picture, that one makes me a little bit more nervous with this because, yeah, what's, we don't have the leverage. We have an enormous amount of leverage right now with, with, with 550.
So I share your concern with how it was originally worded, where it said where we will move, when either there's a new building or, um, they need this for affordable housing. Right now, it just says, we're in it until we decide to move. Right? It just says, until such a time as the tunnel Littleton has relocated. There's no condition under which, in this wording, that forces us to move before we're ready to move.
Won't be our building at that time, it may not be our choice. We're not the landlord.
Well, contractually, we can, we can.
Well, that's, so that's up to you guys.
Thanks. No, thanks to Steve bringing that up. I mean, that's a, every, every piece of discussion we can have on this helps us answer questions that are gonna come up.
I have one more question for Tom. Tom, motion one would be, um, just majority, would motion two be two-thirds since it's a sale?
No, both majority. Both are majority.
But to sell a, a parcel of land, isn't that two-thirds?
This isn't the sale though, this is the authorization.
It authorizes the sale.
Right, but we're asking for a special act and so to seek a special act requires a majority vote.
And once the sale went through, town meeting would have to have a two-thirds.
Well, so assuming we're going to need money and assuming that we're gonna be borrowing money, yeah, it would be two-thirds. And, and in fact, even if we weren't borrowing, I think it would still be a two-thirds.
It's, it's the transfer of your property.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Van Nooty.
Anyone else?
You sounded kinda confident on that 8:05 thing like a couple of hours ago. I didn't know how much Gary was gonna talk.
Hey.
Then Gary happened.
Rob Brown's, uh, attended the meeting the other night of presenting the 37 Shattuck Street options and heard the public, tried to hear the public with regard to Shaker Lane issues as well. I'll just throw out with regard to section four, some of what I heard at the public meeting the other night got into aspects I think, Gary, you were speaking to with regard to people appreciating this building and some people really rallying around the concept of, of wanting this building in some way. I don't see section three as giving you the opportunity, or I, or I encourage you to really, these two motions, you have the ability to really present to the town voters what the rehab of this building would be for purposes of maintaining town hall. I often find myself feeling like voters really need to hear that options and those plays, that evaluation, but not that you folks have done it privately, because you always do, but rather the town voters are presented with it so they really understand it very, very succinctly and clearly.
That's what I'm hearing.
And so that's one point. I really encourage, make sure that you've got that ability at a future meeting in order to present those pros and cons, because I think otherwise, a lot of people are just gonna resent that you're tearing down, you know, you're raising a building. Secondly, might be a really stupid idea, haven't talked with anybody, but I think the heartstrings with the deeply affordable housing, AMI, really can move people because it does. But aspects of yet another new building that's shiny, I think Jim used the word shiny, and you're willing to, you'll, I forget how, what you described is, you'll go anywhere. Well, in the Shaker Lane, I've attended the tours and the discussion after the tours and people don't like the idea of tearing, raising Shaker, Shaker Lane for three to four million that they can get, you know, from MSBA to, to take care of that building. They want, some people seem to want that building. As I heard the argument at the most recent 37 Shattuck Street, I started to hear aspects in the laundry list with regard to the problems in this building, look something, somewhere to the problems with Shattuck Street. Not shocking.
Shaker Lane.
Excuse me, Shaker Lane. Not shocking in that this building's much older than Shaker Lane, but that then it's, each of them had their different additions. So I just wanna say, there's some aspect that I could see the public coming to you and saying, why not do the deeply discounted, you know, here? And don't make, you know, I'm not trying to say I support this, but I could see others saying, don't make us purchase yet another X million dollar building for a brand-new shiny town hall, et cetera. So just wanted to throw those two so that you can start to juggle and try to figure out, you've got the ability to communicate pretty directly on those two issues because I think, I think I've heard at the two meetings I've referenced, different aspects of the public that really seem to have passion with regard to those points of view. So I just wanna throw this out while you're talking about it.
Anything else? Are you set, Karen?
I'm set, thank you.
So, uh, article 13, um, was the, um, surplusing of this building.
Correct.
And I, uh, so one of the motions is to, uh, take no action, revise our support and vote to take no action on that. Is there any discussion on that?
I, I agree with that.
I agree with the motion as well.
Okay.
Okay, so just to be, so we're okay with that and we're okay with what Tom presented on 12 for the motion? Or do we want to do those motions separately or?
I'm okay with both, both of them. Well, I'm, I'm okay with, with revising our recommendation on 13 and taking no action and I'm okay with the revised 12 that Tom presented.
The question is, you wanna vote them together or separate, Gary?
Yeah, I, I probably am not, I'm probably not in favor of the second section for the 12. So if we can break it up, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. So do you wanna do the first, should we do the first one on 13? So, move that the select board vote to revise their March 24th, 2025 vote supporting article 13, authorize a surplus of Littleton Town Hall to allow for the development of affordable rental housing at 37 Shattuck Street, to recommend town meeting take no action on article 13.
Second.
Moved by Matthew, second by Chuck. All those in favor, Gary?
Gary's fine.
Chuck?
Chuck.
Matthew?
Matthew's yes.
Karen?
Karen's yes.
Mark's a yes.
And are we ready for the second one? For the second, my, my motion on article 12?
Yeah, we've had plenty of discussion.
Okay.
I'm just not there yet, guys.
Move that the select board provides a revised motion for article 12, authorize special legislation to surplus town hall 37 Shattuck Street for affordable rental housing and pursue the purchase of a new town hall and added to an amendment handout for May 6th, 2025 annual town meeting as approved by the select board.
Second.
Moved by Matthew, second by Chuck. All those in favor, Gary?
Is it no?
Chuck?
I'm gonna go no.
Matthew?
Matthew's yes.
Karen?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
So it passes.
Three to two.
All right.
And to be clear, your objection was not to the first part, it was to the second part.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
That was all I was saying. I mean, I guess I could've made a motion and it, it would've probably had the same result if I had made a motion to just move on one.
Yeah, I understand.
It would've, I think, so I didn't, it was.
I think I understand where you're coming from, so I just wanted to clarify.
And I'm not, and I just wanna make sure it's on the record that I'm not against this idea.
Right.
You just don't think it's the time to do both of them?
Yeah.
Yeah, I get it.
And I get, and I, I feel horrible, Jim, like, 'cause I know my work you put into this as well.
Oh, it's funny. I appreciate that.
I still have a lot of questions on this property that I, I wanna get resolved.
I agree with you.
That's, that's it. I don't wanna belabor them.
I, I agree with you and I'm much more, I'm, I'm definitely in favor in moving forward on motion one. Motion two, I'm okay with either way on.
I'm okay with letting the voters decide.
I understand.
That's where I came down on it.
Yes.
That's my.
But I think.
I guess I'm always in favor of more information, um, I guess I'm always in favor of more information. And so I think if we're going to come back to the town, the more information we can present to them, the better. And so, that's why I think it's, it's worthwhile to try to seek that authorization, to get more information.
That's fair. But I'm, I agree with you, I'm much more concerned about motion one than motion two. So, and then there's also.
Passing.
Thank you. The lot 107B, which I don't think we have a motion for specifically, that was just information that says Light and Water is okay with the 107A, and they have a plan.
A tie-in bond, yeah.
So.
I would just say that, making that, we've already made it excess, or.
Surplus.
I'll keep saying excess until the day I die. Surplus. It does limit potentially what we can do with the property right next to it, because keeping that in select board control may be something that we're more likely to do, because if we did need access, it sounds like that was the piece of land that now Light and Water is more comfortable with using anyway. So just to.
They ruled out being able to use the other land.
Yeah, pretty much, but they wanted to be very careful that.
Yeah.
Who knows with new technologies and things down the road, who knows?
It looks like even the, the half that we're keeping is problematic for, for a lot of it, so.
Potentially, yeah, so.
I think, I think it's a fine way to go. Oh, minutes? Are we on to that? I'm sorry.
Yes.
No? Any corrections? Okay. Move that the select board vote to approve the meeting minutes from the select board meeting on April 7, 2025.
Second.
Moved by Matthew, second by Chuck. All those in favor? Gary?
Yes.
Chuck?
Thank you, Sue, yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved by.
Thank you, Tom.
Matthew, second by.
Okay, good night, everybody.
Gary?
Yes.
Thanks, Tom.
Matthew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Mark said yes, so thank you, everyone. We'll see everyone at town meeting.
Good night, Karen.
Good night.
Good night, thanks, everyone.